Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're here on Tuesday, February 17, 2015, at 6:00 PM. We're gathered here at City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Brian Weaver, the Minister at Thorpe Springs Church of Christ, to lead us in our invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Councilmember Mickey Parsons. All rise, please.
Shall we pray? Our Father who sits in heaven, hallowed be thy name. We thank you so much for this day that you have blessed us to see. We thank you for the city of Granbury and the mayor and the council that are gathered here this evening. We pray for the entire city, the police department, and the emergency workers, and the fire department, everything that indwells and partakes of maintaining it. We ask that you protect them. We ask that you protect their families, protect the whole city. Not only the city of Granbury, but the whole state of Texas and the whole entire world. We pray that we can work cohesively. We pray that this city can do things that will be prosperous. And most of all, we pray that they realize that they have a God that we pray to, and that he is in charge of everything. We want to thank you for this opportunity that you've given us to be here this evening. And we pray that things that may be done here may be prosperous and edification and uplifting for this great city. We pray for all the ones that are hospitalized and those ones that work in the hospitals that you will be with them as they oversee the sick and shut in. We want to thank you for the mayor and his family, and all the ones that helped make the city go. We want to thank you now for your son that you sent to die on the cross. And may we continue to realize that we have a God to serve, and that we hold on to his unchanging hand. Gorth us now, may this meeting be a prosperous one. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And our pledge to the safe flag of Texas. On behalf of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, ungodly, one indivisible.
At this time, we'll move into the consent agenda, council. The first one being consider approving council meeting amendments minutes of February 3, 2015, regular meeting. Excuse me. The next one being consider adopting Resolution 15-09 and 15-10 in regards to the Texas Municipal Lease Purchase Program, number 6898, and number 6900 between the city of Granbury and First Financial Bank for the purchase of various vehicles and equipment. Council, I'm sure you read on that latter one there that we passed that resolution or had that resolution on January 20th, awarding the finances of those lease equipment. We had several vehicles that summed up to $371,200, and then the purchase of the fire truck for $812,000. So, council, is there any discussion or any changes you'd like to make to the consent If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Have a second?
Second.
I have a second, by Councilperson Myers. Is there any more discussion, council? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilman Meyer?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Next, the council will move into the deliberation agenda. The first item being a public hearing and consider approving a request of Ronald and Cynthia Diane Hasty for a development plat on a .3993 acre tract of the Mead survey, abstract number 350, for a cell phone tower for Verizon Wireless. This property is located northwest of Old Granbury Road between Meander Road and Temple Hall Highway. Scott, could you give us some more on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a development plat application. The plat proposes to develop property just outside the corporate boundary, city limits of the city, just to the north of the intersection of Old Granbury and Peck Road. It's located in rural estate area. The plat proposes a development site to be earmarked for a wireless cell tower. The applicant shown on the application are the property owners. They're working on behalf of a lease arrangement with Verizon Wireless to place a 155-foot wireless tower at that location. Development plat's a little distinguished and different from wireless controls that are contained within our ordinance, our zoning ordinance, which promotes co-location. Since this development is located outside of the corporate boundary, the only governing document that we have regulating cell towers is the development plat under the subdivision ordinance. As such, they've complied with all the supplemental requirements in completing an application against the subdivision ordinance. We do have one outstanding issue that our development committee review has earmarked, which has not been buttoned up to date. That is, we requested a signed access ingress easement to allow for Verizon and emergency response team to go to the site in case there needs to be a response. We've worked with the applicant's attorney, and the attorney basically has come back and said they wish to not file the access easement until they get the approval from the city regarding the development plat to build the tower. It's pretty typical, you don't want to file an access easement tied to the property until the proper approvals and entitlements are in place. They're aware that that's part of the P&amp;Z report to city council, they're very comfortable with it. So, with that in mind, let me show you the layout of the property. This is the property fronting Old Granbury Road. The larger square to the back portion of the property is the site where the wireless tower is going to be located. The elongated strip to Old Granbury Road is the access easement to the little pad site in the back. Again, here's the formal development plat that will be on file with the city secretary if the council chooses to approve it. And that's the little access easement that goes from Old Granbury Road to the back portion of the wireless tower area. And a detailed shot of the developed site. And P&amp;Z recommended conditional denial, that is, the condition being that the signed access agreement needs to be signed and filed for record at the deed records at the county courthouse prior to the execution and approval of the preliminary plat. Mayor, I believe that's about it, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions if council has any.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor, is there any discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the plat with the said conditional denial, the conditional being that the signed access agreement needs to be signed and filed for record prior to the approval of the development plat.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons?
Second.
I have a second, by Councilman Couch. Is there any more discussion, council? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilman Myers?
Aye.
That is approved. The next item is a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance 15-09 regarding request of Stephen J. Boyd to rezone a portion of Lot 1 and Lot 2 of the Granbury Church of Nazarene addition from residential 12,000 zoning, R12, to business commercial zoning for the purpose of operating an unhosed bed and breakfast. The property is addressed as 828 Thorpe Springs Road. Scott, do you want to give us some more on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's being considered is a property that's bounded in red, is located on Thorpe Springs Road, more specifically considering the adjoining uses which are somewhat compatible with the proposed. You have a multifamily development just to the north, you have light commercial zoning to the east that's contiguous to the subject property, and just to the south where that R2 is, that's Mr. Southern's property, which is currently occupied as a group home. The applicant has submitted land use compatibility proposals which support the rezoning as discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. First, that the subject property is contiguous to the commercial zone property to the east. It's located adjacent to the Oaks Retirement Center, to the north, bounded to the south by the group home, and is also contiguous to Thorpe Springs Road. Very real shot of the property. P&amp;Z recommends approval of the business commercial rezoning as permitted or as requested by the applicant, and is found to be commensurate with the comprehensive land use plan of the city of Granbury.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Is anybody in the public like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Steve Reed here on behalf of the applicant, Stephen Boyd. I think that Scott has covered this item thoroughly, but I am here and pleased to answer any questions that the council might have on behalf of Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Counselors, any questions for Mr. Reed out there? I'll now close the public hearing. Counselors, any more discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning for the business commercial. As they've stated, this area is already zoned with the mixture of light commercial uses and distribution of the residential use.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Counselor, is there any more discussion on this item? If not, Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Yea.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilman Myers?
Yes.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 15-10 regarding a request of Erin Merritt to rezone Lot 7, Block 1 of the Shady Grove addition from residential 7,000 zoning to multifamily zoning for the purpose of bringing illegal non-conforming existing fourplex residents into compliance. This property is addressed as 313 Shady Grove Drive. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, the subject property, which is bounded in a teal color on the map, is zoned, single-family residential. It was zoned that way in 2001 when the city undertook the comprehensive rezoning of the entire city. The development there, the fourplex, was built prior to that time, so it was actually zoned and threw it into a non-conforming classification. What's being requested by the applicant is to place that nonconformity back into a conforming status with their zoning ordinance, which is a good thing. He's requesting multifamily. You can see the property just located to the north, northeast of this is also a fourplex area, and that's also zoned multifamily as well. So, in essence, the property owner is just trying to get right with the zoning ordinance, and that's a good thing, because if you're incompatible with zoning and you're nonconforming, it tends to hang the title up a little bit. So, Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the request as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor, are there any discussion or anything we'd like to discuss on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the rezoning to the multifamily used consistent with the comprehensive plan in the surrounding areas of the fourplex complex.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen, and a second by Councilman Perkel. Counselor, is there any more discussion on this item? If not, Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
That is approved. The next item is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Leap Holdings LTD to final plat a 1.6 acre tract of the Mylamm County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, to lots 1 and 2 of the Valley View Estates. The property is located in the 700 block of East Moore Street. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The subject property on this particular map is shown, it's actually to be in the ETJ, it's in the city now. When it was preliminary platted, it was outside the city, it was vested by our ETJ standards. So, we're showing it kind of out in the interim holding area right now, but it was an application that was actually vested under our county ETJ standards, that was a first-in-time application. So, what we're saying is a preliminary final plat application. He will be in an interim holding zone and grandfathered in as nonconforming, so just like the prior case, the developer has an opportunity to come in after the fact and provide the zoning district in place at a later date. But as such, he's vested under our county standards, working within ETJ. We saw this preliminary plat application a few months prior. In essence, what this is, is more of a townhome type of development, and we talked a little bit about grinder pumps. If you recall, on Moore Street, the sewer line was somewhat shallowed, and the city council issued a variance to not extend it through the frontage of Moore Street. The proposal was that there was a topographical hardship, and he was going to provide interior water and sewer service with private lines, private water lines and private sewer lines with select grinder pumps, one of the issues that the staff had a comment on, and the developer has addressed is the maintenance of the grinder pumps. There's a note on the plat that there'll be a responsible maintenance entity for the grinder pump. Our engineer and our public works director has looked at it and vetted it out, and they have no further comment on it. So, there are no variances tied with this particular final plat application. All the variances were issued as a part of the preliminary plat application, so this is a pretty basic elementary final plat application presented here tonight with no variances. P&amp;Z recommends approval of the final plat as presented.
Scott, did you say they have designed a series of pumps to go along with that?
Yes.
And they've meant approval, I guess, I mean?
And Public Works and our city engineer with Freezer Nichols has looked at their private design, and they have no further comment on it.
Okay.
Same to address all their comments.
Thank you, Scott.
So, what they'll do is basically have, if you recall the site, and I wish I had the site plan here, but there'll be a series of, well, there'll be a series of buildings like along Lot 1, Block 1, there'll be about three or four structures, each one having three or four dwelling units in it, like a townhome. And each one of those, or two of those, will have its own grinder pump. So, there'll be a series for Lot 1, for example, will have two or three grinder pumps. Is Godwin Thomas here for a chance? Yeah. So, yeah, if you would explain, if I may, Mayor defer back to you so we can...
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm Godwin Thomas, the owner of Leap Holdings and the property. Also, the professional engineer on this project, Chris Hay from EHT, is also here. If you feel some questions might be better directed towards him, I'd be happy to fill in anything I can in the meantime.
So, if you can, or maybe your engineer can explain how the grinder pump system works, and how there will be no safety...
That way, it wouldn't be lost in translation.
Mayor, council, thank you. I'm Chris Hay with EHT. Just a quick explanation of the grinder pump system. These individual units will gravity flow into a grinder pump station, which then pumps it up into the manhole located at the street, which will gravity flow into the city system along Moore Street there. So, there'll be three duplex grinder pump stations that will cover the entirety of these two lots, that is plating. Multiple units will go into each station, and they're designed for that to minimize the amount of grinder pumps that you need for this project. So, if you have any more questions or need any more explanation, I'd be happy to do it.
These are all in the confines of the building?
Oh, these are exterior of the buildings, located in open spaces or grassy areas. The buildings will have, just like a typical unit, gravity sewer flowing out of the unit, and instead of just tying directly into the city's system, it dumps into the grinder pump unit. It's a fiberglass manhole, basically, that collects it and allows it to be pumped back up to the city system.
Counselor, is there any more questions for these gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, any more discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plat as requested by the applicant.
I'll move.
I've got a motion by Councilman Parsons. For a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Counselors, any more discussion on this item? If not, Councilman Perkel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
That item is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 15-11 regarding a request of Shelby Miller Grady to renew a specific use permit for an unhosed bed and breakfast in a residential 8,400 district on a portion of Block 62 of the Nut Edition. This property is addressed as 620 East Bridge Street. Counsel, this is a renewal of a current B&amp;B ordinance there. Scott, do you want to give us some more information on that one, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. This, as you mentioned, this is a renewal of an existing SUP that's in place. The prior SUP was issued for three years. I can tell you, this particular property has been operating with no reported incident. As such, the applicant has gone before P&amp;Z and requested an extension to five years. The Planning and Zoning Commission has extended that request report to you to allow for the five-year consideration, and that vote was unanimous by P&amp;Z.
Scott, that's common, right? Five years, it's not three, it's five?
It's correct. So, she's going from, the proposal is to go from three to five years, and that's common for B&amp;Bs.
Okay.
Without incident.
And usually, the three years, or year, whatever, is it kind of a probation thing, where there's no incidents?
Typically, we go from one to three to five on SUPs for B&amp;B, and this is for a two guest, unhosed guest suite.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor, is there any more discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the request to allow the two guest units to unhose beds and breakfasts for the five-year term for the date of the council approval.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Counselor, any more discussion? Councilperson Myers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
That item is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 15-12 regarding a request of Durant Grantor Trust, A&amp;B, to rezone an approximately 2.8 acre of the Benjamin Green survey, abstract 197, from interim holding to heavy commercial for the Durant Toyota. The property is located in the 5,100 block of Highway 377 East. Scott?
Mayor, if you will.
I'm sorry. We've got two items here, counsel. Eight and nine are together, so I'm going to go ahead and read nine, but we'll vote on them separately here. And nine would be in the public hearing and consider approving a request of the Durant Grantor Trust, A&amp;B, for a development plat of a 4.616 acre tract of the Benjamin Green survey, abstract number 197, for the purpose of developing a parking lot for Durant Toyota in the 5,100 block of Highway 377 East. Now, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. What we have is an application, it's a plat application and a rezoning application, and this particular piece of property actually overlaps into the corporate boundary of the city. Let me get to the map here. So, what we have is that area that's shaded in red is the area that's in the corporate boundary. That request is coming before city council to consider rezoning from interim holding to heavy commercial to allow for an automobile parking lot. If you see the line that stretched from the red to the yellow on the very top, that's the city limit boundary. So, you can see some of the parking lot is actually in the ETJ of the city, it overlaps. So, the way we're handling this is with two applications. One is a development plat application to develop that portion that's completely within the area overlapping into the city in the ETJ for the impervious cover to allow for the development of the parking lot. And the second application is to consider the rezoning request for that area bounded in red, which is a rezoning request to heavy commercial for the parking lot. If you look closely at the site plan, you can see that area that's within the city actually has the landscape islands and whatnot, the open space requirements. It also has a small detention pond in the middle of it to actually detain water that our engineers looked at and slowly release it back into the 377 right away. So, the impervious cover, stormwater flows, has been looked at by our city engineer. He has no further outstanding comment on this. The other sidebar comment is, for parking lots within our area, especially automobile parking lots, we generally see a lighting plan. So, it's conveyed to the applicant's consultant that if they choose to put up site lighting on this, a site lighting plan, it has to be consistent with our zoning ordinance requirements for illuminating the site, needs to be submitted prior to construction. The property owner and the applicant's consultant with BHB is aware of this, they've agreed to that. They just didn't want to do the illumination plan at this time. Usually, it's tied to building permit applications anyway, so we don't see it at this juncture. The other little nuance here is because it's a development plat, development plat's tied to the site planning and the built facility, so we usually generally see with more formal plaits, buildings, where we see the extension of water and sewer to sustain the development proposal. Since there's no buildings on this site, city staff has requested, and the developer has added a note stating, at such time, any built facility, i.e. a structure, gets built on this site, they will, the city will have another bite of the apple, so to speak. Consideration for water and sewer extensions will basically be reevaluated at that time. So, that note is on the plat as well. Those are the particulars of these two applications, Mayor. I'll be happy to entertain any questions with that. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the heavy commercial rezoning as proposed by the applicant, and also approval of the development plat as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody in the public would like to speak on either one of these items? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Counselor, is there any concerns or discussion or questions to Scott?
I've got a couple, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
Okay, reading is, is this a parking lot for customers?
What's being proposed is just automobile storage parking lot. So, it's not a, from our knowledge and talking with the applicant, it's not a sales lot, it's just a storage lot. Now, I can tell you that there's a little nuance in our zoning ordinance that you can actually sell in heavy commercial, sell new cars in a heavy commercial zone, so if they hypothetically transferred over to new car sales and that, they would still be compliant. But used car sales requires a specific use permit, so if they sold used cars out of there, they would be violating the zoning ordinance.
Used car lot would... Used car lot would have to have a ten-foot fence.
Uh, used car lot would need an SUP.
Yeah.
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 All right. Counsel, any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval for the heavy commercial zoning as proposed by the applicant.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Counselors, any more discussion on this?
It was Tony, I think. Tony made it. It's the Councilman Allen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Allen made the motion.
Yes.
Right there, Colin. Councilman Allen made the motion and the second by Councilman Perkel. Y'all sound alike down there.
Thank you.
Counsel, no more discussion. Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilman Meyer?
Aye.
That is approved. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the planning and zoning, the, uh, development plat that appears and that the, uh, for the, uh, with no variances on it and recommend approval for the development plat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Counsel, any more discussion? If none, Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Those are both approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance fifteen dash thirteen regarding a request of Orion Power Sports, the Thun Factory, for a specific use permit for ATV sales serviced with outdoor display in a heavy commercial district on Lot nineteen of the East Park Edition. This property is addressed as twenty-six oh eight, Highway three seventy-seven east. Scott, can you give us some more information on that one, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. This was the prior location of Big Dog, uh, Golf Carts, uh, which has changed its badging and moved to the Acton Triangle. Uh, we have this new business located at this being proposed at the intersection of Business Boulevard and three seventy-seven. Our zoning ordinance allows for the consideration of, um, these type of terrain vehicles, sells new and used in a heavy commercial zone under the issuance of an SUP. The applicant was made aware of the prior site plan and has, uh, worked with staff to agree to comply with prior site plan, which you see before you as an attached, as an attachment to the proposed draft adoption ordinance. Uh, six parking spaces required, approximately six hundred square foot of display area set aside, uh, occupation of the, the primary structure located on site. Uh, P and Z recommended approval of the SUP, uh, for a three-year term. Uh, the ATVs shall be displayed as delineated on the prior, uh, aforementioned attached site plan and then standard business hours seven to seven. Again, these were the three conditions that were, um, used prior on the property for Big Dogs. Uh, P and Z voted unanimously to support it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, or is there any more discussion on this item?
They've already got some equipment there, haven't they?
They, they do. Yeah, and they actually are, the, the SUP is kinda tied to the property, not the property owner, but it is about, it is turning out. So, they're renewing it for this new business. So, the timing...
I was wrong with it. I didn't go by and seen them and I thought it's not.
Yeah.
Somebody's moving in the building.
So, this one will avoid out the, the prior SUP, uh, when it turns out.
Counsel, any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the SUP to allow for the daily outdoor display with the following conditions, that this specific use permit shall expire in three years from the city council approval and that the ATVs shall be displays as designated on the attached site plan and also the outside display will be allowed during standard business hours from seven to seven. Do I have a motion, counsel?
So moved.
I have a coun, a motion by Councilman Parsons?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, counsel? If not, Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance fifteen dash fourteen regarding a request of Lee Maddox to renew a specific use permit and to allow for the rental of new or used panel trucks, vans, trailers, recreational vehicles, or motor-driven buses in operable condition and where no repair work will be done in the heavy commercial district on an eight point seven eighteen acre tract of land. This property is addressed as fourteen hundred Weatherford Highway. I believe this is a renewal too, isn't it, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Could you go ahead and give us some more information on that one, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the area that's delineated, uh, bounded in teal but located in the heavy commercial red district. Uh, we've seen this, uh, application, uh, as an SUP request prior to. It was issued for one year. I can tell you this business has been operating, uh, under that permit without reported incident. If you notice on your application, the property owner slash applicant has requested a five-year term. Uh, during the deliberations at Planning and Zoning Commission, the P and Z, uh, stated during their discussion that typically we go from one to three to five. And, uh, so the applicant got up to the podium and acknowledged that and, and agreed with the three-year term. So, that's why you see the P and Z, uh, P and Z motion, uh, for three years as delineated in your report in your packet suggesting a three-year term instead of the five that's on the application's, uh, proposal. So, with that in mind, it's basically, uh, re, renewing the site plan that was delineated on the prior SUP. P and Z recommends a renewal of the SUP for a term of three years as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this topic?
Mayor, uh, thank you and council members. Uh, I'm Ken Birch with U-Haul and, uh, obviously Scott is explaining, kinda taking you through the, the proposal that we're, we're putting forth with it. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm just here to entertain that and I know, of course, the, uh, the owner representative, Lee Maddox, is here as well. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, are there any questions for Mr. Birch while he's up there? Go ahead and say it for Mr. Birch if you want. I think, uh, Mr. Birch did pass out a, a pamphlet there. You guys, uh, councils, feel free to look that over at your leisure, but, uh, I think most of it's pretty self-explanatory there. There's no, uh, one, no other, uh, people wanting to speak at the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, is there any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the renewal of the SUP for a three-year period of time on this item. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by, was that Councilman Parsons? And a second?
Second.
By Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion? If not, Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Councilman, Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance fifteen dash fifteen regarding a request of Mike Brown Hyundai to amend the existing planned development heavy commercial zoning district with auto sales and service to add three additional accessory buildings and new signage to the property. The property is addressed, the property is addressed as forty-nine sixty East Highway three seventy-seven. Scott, can you lead us into that one, please?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The subject property that's located is, uh, shown in purple on your screen, bounded in a teal color. It's a planned development, heavy commercial to allow for car sales on site. Um, it has some prior variances tied to the, uh, to the location. What's being presented by the applicant is, uh, a request to amend the PD to allow for the construction of three accessory buildings, which are highlighted on the site plan in a darker color toward the back of the property. It doesn't affect the primary streetside presentation of the existing development. These are three accessory buildings and if memory serves me correctly, they're for a make-ready building, a car wash, and a bedliner building. If you notice on the, on the development plan, it's tied to the, uh, to the PD amendment proposal to allow for the consideration of the addition of these three buildings is you have a note, one, to allow for the use of tilt wall instead of our masonry, uh, which is our standard zoning ordinance requirement. And there's a second note regarding a, well, it's a variance to the sign, but the variance, there's already an existing variance to the sign granted to the property, tied to the property. And what they're proposing insofar as a sign allows for the same material usage, uh, as this new flag or franchise being proposed on this particular site when it moves off. So, uh, we're not issuing a variance or renew or, uh, creating a new variance for the sign. The sign variance is already there from the previous franchise. And when this new franchise moves there, it can enjoy that right to develop their sign, pylon sign, uh, just like the prior franchise because the variance is actually tied to the property. So, in essence, the ver, the, uh, the PD amendment solely is for those three buildings and to, to allow for the placement of those three buildings and to allow for the alternative material, uh, the, uh, precast concrete tilt wall type constructions in lieu of the masonry as, as stipulated by zoning ordinance. Planning and zoning commission unanimously approved amending the PD as presented by the applicant and adopting the site plan as presented. I will be happy to entertain any questions. Should the council have any, Mayor?
Scott, is that, uh, the precast, is that the entire building?
With the exception of the area for the doors and windows, I believe it is, yes. And I think, yes, okay. Looking for the architect. Yes, it is.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, we're opening the public hearing up. Is there anybody in the, in the, uh, audience that would like to talk on this item? If not, I'll, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, are there any more concerns, questions on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the said plat with the, uh, approve the said flats with the said variances to section eleven point seven point B point two of the rezoning ordinance lying precast concrete with textured paint coating for the car wash building and the precast concrete with the textured paint coating for the pre-engineered metal building and for the make-ready and bedliner building. So moved. I have a motion by Councilman Parsons?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Counselors, any more discussion on this item? If not, Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
That item is approved. We're halfway through. No. The next item is a public hearing and considering adopting ordinance fifteen point six, fifteen dash sixteen regarding a request of E.L. Harris for a specific use to allow the operation of a truck slash trailer rental business in heavy commercial district on a one point one zero zero acre tract of the J.L. Boswell survey, abstract number six eighty-one, and the Martin Seitzer survey, abstract number five oh two. This property is addressed as twenty-one fourteen Highway three seventy-seven east. As you know, that's the mobile station, counsel, there on three seventy-seven. Scott, can you, uh, lead us into this one some more?
Yes, sir. This is the area that's bounded in a teal color. You can see the, as the mayor mentioned, this is the mobile gas station. What's being proposed is the consideration of a specific use permit to allow for the truck-trailer, uh, display and rental of U-Hauls. We have a site plan presented by the applicant that depicts in red where the placement of those, that rental, uh, area would be. It's basically around the shuttered car wash that they don't use anymore. So, they're looking at placing it around the closed car wash one to make sure that they have adequate parking to support the primary use of the convenience store. That area is shown for those parking spaces generally in yellow. Uh, we conferred with our fire inspector to make sure that there's proper ingress egress, twenty-four-foot wide lanes, uh, in and about the site. The applicant realized that, that this is a pretty sensitive issue, that we don't need trailers and trucks, uh, just stored haphazardly out there compromising ingress egress through the site. Uh, as such, uh, this is one of those that we're kinda dipping our toe in the water. I think both P and Z and our fire inspector said they're all supporting of it, but they know that the, the SUP will be for one year and it'll kinda be beta-tested through and reviewed on performance within that one-year time span. So, to underscore, P and Z recommends approval of the variance or the, uh, application for the SUP to allow for the U-Haul truck-trailer storage as shown on the site plan for a term of one year.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody in the public wanna speak on this item? No, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, are there any discussion on this item?
I've got one, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
You're saying that car wash is closed?
Yes.
Are they gonna park them longways or head in or how they gonna do it?
Uh, Councilman Allen, if I may, I'd like to defer to the applicant and see how they're gonna, kinda, I mean, they're showing the general area and I would think they're gonna park them neatly where they could just tie onto them and pull them out, kinda with the, the, the trailer hook facing out toward the east, but I'll defer to them.
I'm sunny. I can answer any questions here. Car wash is currently closed and we don't have no equipment in the car wash, so...
Are there gonna be like head-in parking or crossway from the car wash?
Actually, a little bit inside the car wash as it's empty.
No, I'm not talking about inside car wash. I'm talking about beside it or at both ends?
Both ends.
Okay. Are there gonna be head-in or longways?
Probably longways because it will be easier whichever way, easier to in and out for customers.
I'm afraid there, but I tell you, if anybody parks them at side by the car wash, it's hard to get around through there.
On the side of the car wash, we park our own cars sometimes, but on the front end and nobody goes there anyways, so... Because that was the place where people, when the car wash was on, maybe people were going from back and coming out from the front, so...
What size trucks are these gonna be?
Sorry?
What size trucks?
Usually, I guess there are ten and fourteen foot. Once in a while, like, we're not planning to do it on a huge scale, so...
The bigger, the longest one will be fourteen?
Longest one I have seen U-Haul is twenty, but as I said, we're not going to pla, we're not planning on doing it on a high scale, so we'll carry the small trucks and small equipment.
U-Haul, I think. So, you, so you're gonna handle trailers, trucks, just anything as, as in the other location, I guess?
Yes. Uh, if I could be of any further assistance there. Uh, generally, what we have is, is, uh, our, our line of equipment is ten foot, fifteen, uh, twenty and twenty-six. Uh, we do have the ability and what we're looking at here is obviously he gives exposure to the, to the city and so forth and, and can help his business. But what we're looking at as far as parking on this lot would be a ten foot or a fifteen foot, uh, as far would be the biggest truck that we would, we would have there. We would limit that as far as drop-offs and so forth from getting the larger trucks into that, that dealership. And, uh, as far as the parking, I mean, obviously, it's Sunny's, uh, business, but, uh, we kind of sat down with him and did a, a display plan. And basically, how we looked at, it, basically, the truck would sit up against the entrance to the, uh, to the car wash. So, it, they would run, basically, uh, it would be, uh, north and south on three seventy-seven there with the, uh, the front of the truck pointing toward, uh, pointing north.
Scott, I'm gonna ask a question. Is, what, at what point do we, if we go by or we see what we would call an overflow of vehicles there that we say, well, there's too many vehicles parked there?
So, it has to be spotted basically by one of our inspectors. And in this case, it's largely the fire inspector has to drive by or get a complaint and go look at it and say, yeah, you're compromising ingress egress.
Right.
Uh, one way to get ahead of this is to have the gentleman set up and then have as a... a courtesy our fire inspector go look at their display plan and say, yeah, that's what, that's basically how we need to configure this from here on out for the term of this S U P and just have an understanding with possibly Kevin Jones out in the field, uh, when you set your inventory out.
One thing I would like to add on to is I, the concern that people get in and get out, I would not compromise it myself because that's not the primary business.
Right, right.
The primary business is the gas and the inside merchandise. If it causes one inconvenience to somebody get in, get out, I won't do it.
Right.
But my concern is to add on to the business, not cause inconvenience, so, like, I would be more concerned of that part.
How many, how many U-Haul rental places is it in a five mile radius there?
Uh, that would be, within a five mile radius, you're looking at three, possibly four if you, uh, I don't know if all season falls into that five mile. If you, uh, I, you know, one of the, and, and part of the presentation was I did want to show and, and, uh, the vitality in Granbury in all honesty. Uh, you know, during the, the month of, of, what I compared to the P and Z meeting was I had a map that was actually part of the presentation that I had that showed during from, from December eighteenth through, uh, January seventeenth, we actually had a hundred and ninety rentals within a six mile radius of downtown Granbury. Uh, and just to show, you know, the, the level of demand and the need within the area. And, and obviously, I can't understate that that's actually the slowest time of the year and, cause it will, it will double and triple as we head into the summer months. And that's, that's obviously the reason for the, uh, the number of dealerships because it allows for, for less demand on his main business so that he can still run that, it does not overrun it. And then again, so that we can control, uh, how much equipment is in the area without parking ha- having to have space to park a bunch of equipment.
I hope they're not moving out.
Huh?
I hope they're not moving out of Granbury.
Uh, no, actually, I, to, to be honest with you, I have more problems with, with too many trucks coming in, I got, and I have to get them out of here.
That's a good problem, okay.
I, I think what Scott said was a good idea if we get Kevin to kind of lay it out with y'all and, uh, that way, I understand you don't want to block your business.
Yes, that's, that's.
And we do want business in Granbury. We'll make money every time you rent one of them. We get tax revenue off of that, but on the other hand, we don't want to, you know, junk you know, you don't either, so.
I, I'm not speak for Sunny, but I'm, I'm sure I would have no issue whatsoever sitting down with Kevin and, and laying that out.
We can, we can just work with the site plan and then as, when he sets up his display, we can just as a courtesy have Kevin go out there and just, uh, validate against the site plan that there's no, uh, problems with ingress egress.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. There are no more discussion from the, from the public, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors, are there any more discussion on this item? If not, counsel, I entertain a pr- a motion to approve the specific use for the one-year term, the said applicant.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilperson Myers. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Councilman Couch. Counselor, is there any more discussion on this item? Not, Councilperson Myers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Purple? That is approved. Scott, I'm gonna let you off for a while here, I think. Our next item is request ease of the Texas Capital Fund Infrastructure Development Program. We have a couple, I'm still some, uh, items we need to clear up here or do you get, uh, our resolutions on them? The first one being to consider adopting a resolution fifteen dash eleven authorizing the mayor or his designee to implement a section three program. Now, the section three program will provide for the greatest intent feasible employment and the contracting opportunities for the section three business of the area in which Texas Community Development Block Grant Program project is being carried out. And the next one being consider adopting the resolution fifteen dash twelve establishing rules and regulations regarding the use of excessive force. I'm gonna call upon Ava Gregory to kind of talk on that, there she is, a little bit more to the council if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Um, on December, I, first of all, I would like to say that we also have in the audience, uh, representatives and the owner of the Langford Community, um, Service Management Program, um, that grant, um, services were awarded to, um, Langford. And, um, this is discussing on December sixteenth, we had approved the agreement between, uh, the City of Granbury and the Texas Agricultural Department, um, for the agreement for the, um, um, Capital Fund Infrastructure Program that allows us to fund the infrastructure for water, sewer and electric, um, infra- infrastructure for the Mesquite Pit Restaurant. Um, part of the requirements that was, um, approved, um, to receive the Community Development Block Grant Program was, uh, to, um, authorize, um, adopt a resolution that, uh, authorizes the mayor to implement a section three program. Uh, section three program simply means that, um, the city is extending co- um, contracting opportunities to section three business, businesses in the area where this grant program is being administered and it is only specific to this program. Section three businesses is identified as businesses that has section three residents own at least fifty percent or more of the business and a section three resident is a resident that, um, defined as a public housing resident or a low to very low income person who lives in the area where the grant project is being located. Um, the second resolution that we are asking for the council to approve tonight is the resolution to establish rules and regulations regarding the use of excessive force that is, um, a HUD Appropriation, um, Act, um, requirement and it's also part of the federal law, uh, and was part of the agreement that was signed between the city and the Texas Department of Agriculture. And with that, um, I wanted to also again add that if you have any additional questions, um, we have, uh, Ms. Judy Langford and Shawna Cosper here who are the, uh, representatives who will help us administer this grant and do the necessary, uh, paperwork as required.
I've got one question for the city manager. Uh, Wayne, we, uh, we normally do provide for the section three and construction in the city already, don't, or is that something we do already or is that?
Well, no, not, uh, this requires us to do some training, some additional training.
So we would do training?
And so we train primarily employees.
And this would be on the construction of the, uh, the Mesquite Pit, for instance?
Yes, uh, so this is specific only to this grant program, so that's how the resolution was written. And it simply states that we are extending contracting opportunities to residents who are classified as a section three, uh, businesses.
How do we make them aware of it?
Uh, when we advertise, we will, uh, say that City of Granbury is a section three employer.
Okay, okay.
This also applies to?
To, uh, low income and moderate income.
Yeah, that's section three residents are identified as that.
Is that where they get the fifty-one percent, mayor?
Pardon, Councilman Allen?
Is that where they get the fifty-one percent must live in a, uh, the residence of the city?
No, it, um, it actually says that, uh, section three businesses are identified businesses where the owner, um, who owns at least fifty-one percent or more of the business is identified as a section three, uh, resident.
What happens if we did this and we got the money and they didn't move here?
We, we don't have to do anything, uh, different than what we have been doing, it's just, um, yes.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Judy Langford. Thank you for inviting us here to talk about section three. Section three is, um, HUD, Housing and Urban Development's, uh, way of trying to encourage participation with low to moderate income persons. They already do that in the program by saying that the business itself has to hire fifty, at least fifty-one percent of the employees that they say that they're going to hire for this program have to be of low to moderate income. And low to moderate income is eighty, is for Granbury, whatever eighty percent of the area median income is for HUD County. And that's what, that's what low to moderate income is. Uh, section three is the, is the law that makes low to mo- that defines that you have to use low to moderate income persons for HUD programs. For the city's purposes, HUD has gone a couple of steps further in the last few years and said that they would like the city to advertise more when they have a program, when they have HUD funds, that section three individuals or businesses, um, they would like you to encourage their participation in the program. And that's, that is what your section three, uh, resolution says. And so we will bit, we will put it in the bid advertisements for the, for the construction work. It will be in the construction, uh, manual for the construction company and they will have to report their section three hires as part of the responsibility as a constr- contractor on this program. All of those things will be handled by, by us. We do that as part of the administration of the grant. Does that answer the question?
Yes, ma'am, I think.
Understand.
I may be confused here and is this the same thing we got, uh, for, uh, the new steakhouse?
For the new steakhouse?
Same type of, uh, program we did for them?
This is the same thing, yeah, talking about this.
Yeah, this is, this is of the steak.
This is Mesquite Barbecue. This is for Mesquite Barbecue.
Yes.
Which they're working on, Mesquite Barbecue.
Okay, sorry. Okay, okay, here's where I'm confused at. You're saying that you gotta hire fifty-one percent of the employees?
Yes, sir. Have to be low to moderate income when they come to work for Mesquite Barbecue. The hope is by, from the agency, from TDA, Texas Department of Agriculture, that the, that you, that they will actually be able to employ persons that were of low to moderate income per, prior to going to work for Mesquite Barbecue and that they actually will put them into a higher income category.
If they don't, is it a steady level?
Um, you are not because of the way things are worded at this point, that the, that it will be covered otherwise, but we feel fairly co- not fairly, we feel confident that the con- the business will do that. They have three years to, to, uh, make those hires.
Okay. Like, when we put in the sewer line and the water line, that was part of the money, I believe.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Our own staff will do that or we'll sub it out to a general contractor.
You will put it out to bid for a general contractor to do so, yes, sir.
We couldn't guarantee that either.
You, you only have to encourage participation in section three.
I'm answering too many questions.
No, you're not.
No, no, I, I'll be, I'll be glad to answer anything you have.
No, I just, we wouldn't in trouble down the road.
No, it, it, it's encouragement of, of hiring of section three employees as far as the construction is concerned. The business is under contract with the city to, to make those, uh, hires for those employees. It's, it's a little, it's two-pronged. You have the business that has to hire fifty-one percent low to moderate income persons, then you have the construction company that you're encouraging to hire, uh, low to moderate income persons.
In, in, in your deal, did, did, did you say that the owner, if he owns fifty-one percent, he's gotta live in the city or did I miss that?
No, it's fifty-one pers- it's how you qualify somebody as a section three, um, business and, um, it's if somebody is fifty-one percent owner of the construction business that's going to work there, is low to moderate income person themselves, then the business qualifies as low to moderate income as well. And I will say that it's probably a misnomer because I don't know a construction company that can get bonded for over a hundred thousand dollars for payment, for, for performance bonds that can be low to moderate income. So it's kind of a little bit of a, it's something HUD requires us to do. It's unlikely we'll, we will be able to do it because they have to be able to be bonded.
Thank you. Maybe I missed out the first part, but do you have your actual numbers for a single person that would fall under low to moderate income number?
Um, I did not bring them with me, I apologize, but generally, it's going to be for one person, it's usually generally thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, and they qualify?
That qualifies for them, low to moderate.
And do you have an idea that if they have one dependent, what that number goes to?
It does go up as, uh, as your families get larger and there is, I'll be glad to, to, to give that to Ava so she can share it with you is what that, what that is. Um, I just, I'm sorry, it's different for every county and I didn't bring it with me, I apologize.
It was very interesting that Granbury, forty-nine point two percent of our population is low to moderate income.
It is, because it's only eighty percent of the area median income. It's not low, low income.
Right.
It's low to moderate.
And, and that's been my experience when I've dealt with this, um, what we would think is low income, we look at those numbers and, you know, we would, we would like to have those numbers, so, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for Ava or this lady here? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say one more thing.
Wait, wait, Wayne?
Uh, on the excessive, uh, force, you know, we do not use excessive force and so I talked to the police chief, he's in agreement with that. We are still protected, as you say, as you see, it says it, it, it bars entrance, uh, the, how's that read? Uh, regarding the use of excessive force during nonviolent si- civil rights demonstrations including physically barring entrance to facilities or locations, we have other ordinances and other laws that bar them from disrupting meetings or anything else that, and this is done subject to local, subtle, subject to local regulations and ordinances. So he felt we were protected from anything that would not allow us to keep a individual from, uh, impacting a meeting or normal working hours. Would you agree with that?
Yes, sir. He does support policy as long as the, as long as the individuals are, are nonviolent, um, it's, you know, it's doesn't force, it's only for those that are being nonviolent in demonstrations, so, I think you're fair, you're covered by your other regulations and this just fits within.
And our police chief had no, no problem with, uh, approving this.
And one household member is thirty-seven thousand. You, I, it pulled it up. Wasn't too far off.
Thank you. Counsel, any more question for Ava? Thank you, Ava. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, first of all, to pass a resolution to authorize the mayor or his designee to implement a section three program.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion, counsel? If not, Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Purple?
Aye.
Councilperson Meyer?
Aye.
That part is approved. The next one, I'll entertain a motion to pass a resolution to establish rules and regulations regarding the use of excessive force.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen?
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Uh.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilperson, person, Purple?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
That is approved. Our next item is the, consider adopting resolution fifteen dash oh eight authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation for constructing and improving streets within the city, including the acquisition of rights of right of ways thereof, acquiring land for a police station, constructing, improving and equipping firefighting facilities, constructing, improving and equipping park and recreation facilities and paying engineering fees associated with the downtown square project. Ava, I'm gonna call upon you once again to give the council a little more history on this one, would you please?
Thank you, mayor. As you described the intent of the bond issue, um, for, um, the streets, the acquisition of the land for the police station, the improving and equipping firefighting facilities and, um, for park and recreation, um, improvements as well as the engineering for the downtown square project. Um, prior to the issuance of these certificates, the city is required to publish a notice of intention of these bonds in, uh, the local newspaper. of these bonds in, uh, the local newspaper. And this ad has to run, uh, thirty days prior to the actual issuance of the bond. And, uh, the ad will have to note, um, the issuance of the certificate, the date, the maximum amount that will be issued, the purpose, what the certificates are for, and, uh, the manner in which the council is, proposes to pay the certificates. And after the initial thirty days, the council, the council may consider authorizing an ordinance for the issuance of these certificates. Um, our financial advisor, John Martin from South West Securities, is, um, recommending that we will go to the market on March twenty-sixth. That day falls on a Thursday, and it proposes a favorable day for the bond sale. During the competitive sell, um, bids, we will be taking orders from, uh, brokers and underwriters. And the end of the day, um, which will be the same day in the evening, um, ten till around six P.M., the council will meet and approve these, um, bonds. Um, the reason we targeted Thursday is we've been explaining that Thursday is a better day for a small issue to go out to the market, um, as far as considering a two save and a large issues of flooding the market and now issue won't get any attention. Um, also in your packet is included a debt service schedule that shows that the tentative, uh, interest rate that you are looking at with the cost of issuance is less than two and a half percent at this point. And, um, so, uh, that's the reason we are proposing with the March twenty-sixth date that would require a special council meeting. And, uh, in the intent that will have to be published in the paper, we will have to note the date and the time and the place of the meeting as well. So at this time, we are asking the council to authorize a resolution for the publication of this, uh, notice and set the time and the date. But additionally, I would like to, uh, take the opportunity to, um, go over the list of the project that we have identified in the two-point-five million dollar issue. As described, uh, they include, um, and we have a slide, Scott, if you don't mind pulling it up. Um, we have identified the bond projects we have spoke about before, um, as the projects for the construction improvements of streets, for acquiring the land, um, uh, land for the police station with the architectural fees, um, as well as improving and equipping firefighting facilities, construct- constructing and improving parks and recreational facilities, that would be the skate park and the Moments in Time Trail, the engineering for the downtown square project. And, um, the rest of it is at this time unaccounted for, which could include, um, unforeseen expenses that haven't been identified yet or retainage, um, necessary retainage. Some of the quotes we had received are, um, for, you know, during the budget retreat last year. And, um, while we have not finalized the cost of all these projects, this is an estimate that we wanted to just, um, let you review as well. But the intent tonight is again to authorize the publication of the intent for the proposed bond issue that has to run in the local newspaper. And to set the time and the date and the place where you would authorize the bond issue.
Um, Ava, um, or even Wayne, um, I think it'd be helpful, um, to talk, to talk about the fluidity of the bond process that, um, even after we issue the two-point-five million, that we have flexibility to increase funding for one project over another and one could be less as well. Uh, could you talk about that just a second?
Yes, at this time, um, in Ja- on January twentieth, we had, um, approved a resolution, reimbursement resolution. And at that time, we had to, uh, give, um, an intent of how much we are going to be issuing. And at that time, we came up with a two-point-five million dollars. And we had to identify the type of projects that will be included in the bond. And, uh, with the help of our bond council, we had identified those projects. And that's the wording that you have on your agenda item. But as far as how much each cost, uh, project costs or how much funding we will appropriate for each project, that is, um, up to the city, city council, and that is not, um, dictated by the market or, um, they would have any consideration on the cost of the projects. They, they just need to know what we're going to be spending the money on.
And then, um, just so that I'm clear on the cash flow of this, when I look at the, the debt service, that, um, once we get into fiscal, um, sixteen, that even with the two and a half million dollar bond, that our cash flow actually increases by fifty-six thousand dollars? Am I right on that?
Yes, the proposed schedule that was attached to your, um, agenda item identifies the, um, total outstanding tax-supported debt. And it shows you the, um, principal interest payment for this bond issue. And, um, as council, um, man, uh, Couch have just described, um, we are going, um, from a two-point-seven million dollars tax-supported debt to, uh, just a little bit less than that the first year, um, when we are going to pay the principal on the two thousand fifteen issue. That will not be due till, um, September of two thousand sixteen. So we basically are leveling out our debt capacity at that time, keeping it about the same. But the following years, um, more debt will roll off.
Right, my estimate for the following year is that cash flow would actually increase by three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars, um, compared to today.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Purple, any more, any more questions for, uh, Ava? I can't believe none of the council wants to talk to John Martin today. That's unusual.
I think it'd be helpful just to let everyone know what the rate is on the, on the bond.
Um, the rate at that, at this time, and John Martin had ran the analysis several times. He's getting less than two and a half percent, and that includes the cost of issuance.
Okay, and is that on a fifteen-year payout?
Um, actually, it's.
The twenty?
It is, uh, a ten-year payout.
It's ten?
It's ten.
Oh, that's aggressive. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ava, very good. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the publication of notice of the intention to issue certificates of obligation for the general type projects as described previously and on the date of March, on the date of March the twenty-sixth at six P.M.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch? I have a sec- second by Councilman, uh, Parsons? Any more discussion, counsel? Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Purple?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
That is approved. Our next item is to consider awarding bid number fourteen dash fifteen dash oh-three to Drake Construction of Pantego, Texas, based on their low bid amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars for the base bid for the construction of the James Road Pump Station Project. I'm gonna call upon, uh, Alba Cox to come up and give us a little background and history behind that, please.
Mayor, council, um, as y'all well know, we're, we're continually trying to upgrade our system, trying to get more and more capacity. Um, this is just one more step towards it, uh, far as, uh, basically this pump station is gonna be over on the east side of, uh, James Road where our, we currently have two new well sites that we've just drilled. Um, it's gonna basically be able to, I'm, I'm gonna be able to pump it over into the east, which will help us for one, to lower, uh, the swat's water that we've been working on for years, trying to take care of that. Um, and two, we're having a lot of growth on the east side, so we're trying to take care of that, too. So what this allows to do, and what this is, it's a sixty-two thousand gallon tank. And then basically we'll have two pumps in there. The two wells will actually go into the tank itself. And then from there, we pump it back out to James Road at three-seventy-seven and to the east pressure plane. Um, again, currently, uh, we have the, the swat's plant that we supply the east side. And now, obviously, we have several well sites that we have on this side. This pump station is gonna tie into this, is what it is. Um, what we have is, is we end up, uh, we went, or we opened bids on January twenty-first. Uh, we received two bids. Uh, we had, uh, three people actually pick up, uh, the bid packages, but we only had two bids. One was Lamarck and the other one was Date Construction, which, again, they were the low bid of three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Um, at this time, um, if y'all have any questions or anything else on this.
I do, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
Hey, you said this would take away from the swats?
It will help us.
How much will it take away?
Um, we'll be putting back into the system, uh, roughly about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand gallons a day.
And how much are we getting from there now?
Uh, I believe we're down to a half a million a day, currently.
Yeah, their contract's up twenty-seventeen?
Yes, sir.
You gonna have the plant built by then?
I sure hope so.
It's a purple plant?
Yes, sir, I hope so. Uh, it should be, yes, sir.
Getting close.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any more discussions for, uh, for Alba? Thank you, Alba. If not, I'll entertain a motion to consider awarding bid number fourteen dash fifteen dash oh-three to Drake Construction of Pantego, Texas, based on their low bid of three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars for the base bid of the construction of the James Road Pump Station Project.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
I have a second.
I got a second by Councilman Purple? Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If not, Councilman Purple, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
That is approved.
Thank you.
At this time, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened into open session that all our members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, section five-five-one dash oh-seventy-one, consultation with attorney, airport condemnation. Counsel, take a break. Counsel, uh, the council will now reconvene into, uh, open session. There was no action taken in the closed session. Counsel, if there's no further discussion, council meeting is adjourned.